...made a distinction, and he had never been taught to think that way. I think it means taught, should be taught to think that way. And that's all I have. Anybody else with any changes, corrections, errors, omissions? Anybody else with anything else? Too much sunshine. All those in favor of approving the minutes with those corrections, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so under citizens' comments. Anybody for citizens' comments? Next item on our agenda is an economic development loan approval for the Meditrina Wine Bar. And Amy and Justin?
Do we have old business?
Oh, yeah, old business. Thank you. Let's skip that one right over. Go ahead, Julie.
There's not much on it. So, board retreat, the select board retreat has been set for June 5th. It'll be held at the Stoneheart from 8:00 to noon. So, we'll be working on an agenda to, for you guys working through kind of your strategic plan going into budgeting season for next year. Solar Field, we, I have finally heard back. Lee and I have a meeting Monday morning at 9:30 to talk to Greenbacker, as well as their attorney, to start drafting what a PNS might look like for the potential purchase of that property. So, there'll be more coming back to you guys. Conversation will start with the drafting of a PNS. So, we'll come back once we have that conversation. And then, summer schedule. You guys in the past have, for the months of June, July, and August, only done one meeting. So, wondering if you would like to do that again this year? What, what is your preference?
I just wanted to note that I unfortunately scheduled my family vacation for the first week of August. So, the first meeting in August, I will not be available. If that affects which meetings we choose to take or not take.
We could always wait till we get closer to the dates. And if we have a slow agenda, just cancel the next meeting afterwards, as opposed to just canceling now ahead of time. Because sometimes things pop up, or things change, vacations, or agenda items that we have to address. So, we just keep, we can keep it in mind that if we do have some, a, a slow agenda, we could just skip that meeting if it comes down to it. Or if there's too many people on vacation, or whatever.
That makes sense to me. Yeah?
Is that how you want it? So, you don't want to do what you did last year? You're gonna just go one meeting at a time? Okay, that's fine.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody else have anything for old business? No? Maybe I'll get the order right now. The Chester Economic Development Loan Approval for Meditrina Wine Bar. Amy and Justin Anderson are here. And Bob Flynn from Regional Development are here. Springfield Regional Development. And there is a note in our packet regarding this. And Julie, can you take us through this?
I can, but we're gonna actually let, have the Andersons are gonna maybe say a few words about what their project is. And then Bob Flynn is gonna speak on their behalf. Just for newer board members, when an economic development loan comes to us, SRDC is our vetting tool for financials and all of those pieces, business plans, all of that. And then the recommendation comes to us from SRDC for the use of our clients. So, I think it's, I could say, I could speak all day about Justin and Amy, but we'll let them talk about their project. And then we can let Bob kind of talk about his side. You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm Justin Anderson, here with my wife, Amy. Yes, so we are seeking economic development funding for Meditrina Wine Bar and Restaurant. Our location is 295 Main Street on the Village Green of Chester. Our wine shop has been in existence in Chester for 14 years. My wife's yoga studio has also been in existence in Chester for 12 years. In addition to that, my family owned the Stoneheart Inn and Tavern for 10 years. My professional career for the past 29 years has been wholesale wine management for the full state of Vermont, managing sales teams north of 50 people, along with oversight of all channels in the state, including restaurants, retail, supermarkets, et cetera. Our youngest child is graduating college this May. And this has always been a lifelong dream for Amy and I, to open up our own wine bar. I don't want to misconceive people on wine bar. Wine bar will just be our primary focus of beverage. We will be serving, of course, Vermont's fantastic craft beer, along with the excellent trends of spirits and cocktails today, along with a full restaurant. So, with that, we're excited about the opportunity to continue to bring some vibrancy to the Village Green of Chester. Having, now living there, as well as we own the building. We recognize the need for more foot traffic on our green, and we're excited to be able to do that. And we're very gracious for the opportunity to be considered. Thank you.
Well, that's fantastic news. I think that building would be perfectly suited for a restaurant, and your plans that you have for it, and the location, and the fact that the town could use another place, for sure. I mean, with foot traffic, like you said, and just to bring people into the town. So, it's, it's great to see that you're, you're working at this. And Bob, you, you want to add some words to this?
Yeah, if, if I could, please. So, good to see everybody. I'm Bob Flynn from Springfield Regional Development Corporation. So, as Julie alluded to, for the town's economic development fund, we, we serve as kind of your, your vetting agent, if you will. I will say concurrently, SRDC has its own revolving loan fund. And we have already approved an additional loan besides this one for $55,000. So, that will be the capital stack for this project, assuming the board is, accepts this request. So, we have been working, well, we've talked about this for years, but we've been working with Justin and Amy in earnest, goodness, at least two months, maybe three. And some of you know, but within our office, we also have a Small Business Development Center Counselor, Deborah Boudreaux. And, and she provides, we both provide free and confidential counseling and services. And we're tough. By the time this gets to you all, this has gone through half a dozen iterations, perhaps. And we've really drilled down on it. We've been tough on them. I kind of say, if you graduate from the College of Deb, you're doing pretty well. And, and our area banks like that when loans come to them. And, and the folks have done the work. A lot of times, people will have an idea to start a business, but then they don't really want to do all the work involved with that. And if they can't do the work on the front end, chances are, the business itself is not going to be successful. So, we are confident in their financial projections. We have seen their projections going out three years. We have reviewed their tax returns, their credit scores, other personal information. And we are confident of this request, and certainly would support consideration of it this evening.
It's rare that we've gotten many requests for the money in the fund. I, what's our fund at, $200,000, $300,000?
Just under $4,000.
Just under $4,000?
Yep.
I can't remember the last time that we even lent, lent some out? Not that long ago?
On the green?
Yep.
The gentleman on the green, Danny Apartments.
We are working with another potential applicant at the moment. I will also comment that, so this, what you call the development fund is a revolving loan fund. So, Springfield, Chester, Windsor, all have revolving loan funds in, in our service area, besides what we have as our own. And as interest rates have gone up, and, and financing has gotten tighter, the request for revolving loan fund money in, in all of our towns has started to pick up a bit.
Are there any questions, or comments, or concerns from any of the board members?
I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. I want to echo what Arnie said, that having another opportunity for, for traffic on the green and a delicious meal is wonderful. Thank you.
Anybody else? Amy?
No. I'm glad to see the building come to use, absolutely. The more use, the better.
It's interesting, because you said of all the vetting and all the work that's gone into it, it's hard for me to come up with a question or something that makes sense to ask you about what your plan is, or the money is, or anything like that. And, and it's great to hear that you have the backing of some people that are looking out for their, your interests, and for the interests of the people that are lending the money also, which is helpful. Because we're kind of, not a rubber stamp on this, but basically, yeah, kind of, because of what's happened beforehand. I know we've had requests before where there was a, a little less involvement, and it was a little more clear cut. But a new business is a big undertaking. And I'm just happy to see that the money's being used in, in a place that it was meant to be used, to promote business, and maybe create jobs, and help with the downtown, the village revitalizing down there. So, I wish you luck and success in this. And it seems like the board is on board also, so.
Need a motion?
We need a motion to approve a loan of $55,000 for the Meditrina Wine Bar. And it's 5%, 10 years?
So moved.
Second?
Please, the motion, Ariana's the second. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of the, the loan, as stated, please say aye.
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 Excuse me, anybody opposed? No? Congratulations, and good luck in your endeavor. When do you think opening day is?
That's right.
As far as the line, in one of the next coming seasons.
So, I will be drafting, there's some security documents, and the promissory note and all of that, that I will draft and, and get ahold of you guys to pop in and review and sign. And then we'll get the money to you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a nuisance ordinance. Julie, can you give us the back history on this? On the genesis of this, and what brought this on? I know there's a lot of people here to probably speak towards this issue. And I guess there's been some issues in certain parts of town regarding items that would be related to this nuisance ordinance. In our package, we have a nuisance ordinance, it comes from a Berry City ordinance, which is pretty involved and pretty extensive. But it gives us a good idea about how that would work, and whether we take all of it, none of it, or just parts of it. But Julie, can you give us the background on this?
Sure. So, we have been receiving an increased number of complaints of some properties, one specifically in West Chester, that primarily has to do with farm animals, living on lots that are not really designed for farm animals. Not the ability to keep them maintained, or keep them contained, I should say. So, a lot of goats running in the road. There have been several instances of, you know, very close calls with traffic. It really is a matter of time, and there's going to be an issue. I understand from today, even just today, that the goats were actually walked down Andover Road and up Potash Brook Road, and were spotted coming back down Potash Brook Road. But, so we've got some rogue farm animals around town. And I do know that over the years, I have been hearing of other cases where, you know, chickens in the village, and not keeping them on your property, and being in somebody else's flower garden. And, you know, we, we often deal with some of those types of issues. So, the issue, though, out in West Chester, really kind of raised this to a different level. We have no tools in the toolbox at this point to deal with this type of issue. We have a dog ordinance, that's about it. So, I, I gave you, Preston had found the one from Berry City. It, it is very robust. There is a lot there, not necessarily suggesting that we go that far. But before we started to tailor anything specific to Chester, just really wanted to let, let neighbors and property owners speak to the issues that they are having, if you want to hear that, and get kind of your appetite on an ordinance like this. If you would like to move in this direction, then Preston and I will certainly start looking at drafting something that's appropriate for Chester. But that's the reason for it being here tonight.
So, maybe we'll start with citizens' comments on this topic, to hear what's going on from you folks, so you can let us, fill us in on your concerns and what's happening out there. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue at this time? Sir, just come on up and give us your name.
My name's Bob Lurvy. I live at 66 Eddie Road, right off Potash. Yeah, there's, they're, they're always in the road. Sunday, my wife and I were driving back from Chester on the Andover Road. And we decided to go to the North Country Store, so we continued up the Andover Road. As soon as we come around the corner by Potash, there's 13 goats in the road. Okay? Yeah, I don't want to hit one on my motorcycle. Every time you drive up and down the road, the goats are on there. I was working on a neighbor's house Tuesday. The goats are on the deck. They're running around their property, eating whatever. I've been by these people's house. I can't believe the Humane Society hasn't taken these animals away from these people. There isn't one blade of grass on their property, it's just a mud pit. If they can't take care of their animals, they shouldn't have them. I mean, we've got people chasing goats up and down the road. I have a dwarf fruit orchard at my house. I have blueberry, berry plants. We have an extensive garden. I, I don't want them things up there eating my vegetables, or anything like that. And I mean, we shouldn't have to put up with chasing 13 goats out of our yards constantly, every day. I mean, you know, can you get cows and just let them run loose? You know, I mean, something's got to be done with these goats. They're just, they're terrorizing the people's, you know, yards. They're eating their flowers and everything else. It's, uh, yeah, I don't know. Something's got to be done with them, though. Because somebody's gonna run into one and get hurt on a vehicle, motorcycle, car, something, you know? It's just, something's got to be done with them. That's all I got to say. It's just ridiculous.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Also, Gladys Collins had written a letter that she wanted to have read into the record. Do you want to read it? Do you want me to read it?
Dear members of the Chester Select Board, unfortunately, I am unable to make the select board meeting this evening. But I want to support the development of a town ordinance that will control the ranging of nuisance farm animals. The goats that are the topic of tonight's discussion have been wandering freely for months in the area of Potash Brook and Andover Roads. They have been on neighbors' properties and in the roads we travel. They range from very young kids to adults, to adults, does, does, and billy goats, which totaled 14 when last counted. Some of the does look pregnant at last sighting, and I'm guessing there will be many more in the near future. Goats, as many know, can present a hazard to property and even cause harm to humans. There is no reason that our neighborhood should share the issues that free-range goats can bring. And they should be contained and cared for by the owner. The property in question belongs to the Plum Steel family, and this property has many issues making it out, making it out of compliance with the town's salvage yard ordinance. It borders the Andover branch of the Williams River, and I'm guessing that much of the property's waste flows into that branch. Many of us have been in touch with town officials voicing our concerns about the property, but we are told that nothing could be done. So, here we are again, asking for another ordinance, in the hopes that our neighborhood will get the protection that it needs. For anyone on the board, or in the community, who may feel that they don't have to worry about the issue of salvage yards and errant goats from a personal perspective, I can say that 20 years ago, I thought the same thing. Unfortunately, along with my neighbors, I do. Several years ago, a group of us worked with the select board to develop a salvage yard ordinance to help protect our neighbors, neighborhood's health, safety, and environment. The ordinance was approved by a lawyer and passed into law, yet we have been unable to enforce it. If you approach Chester from almost any direction, you will see that the salvage yard ordinance has not worked for many of Chester's residents that live on the outskirts of town. While we are sparsely populated, our properties have an intrinsic and material value that deserve recognition. We often hear that these ordinances don't have any teeth. But if you look up salvage yards in Vermont, you will find that all salvage yards need to be permitted and monitored for compliance. We need to prioritize, prioritize working with the state to ensure that our neighborhoods get the support that they deserve in dealing with these unlawful issues. My message tonight is this. Please, let's write an ordinance to protect us from free-ranging goats and other livestock animals that can be a hazard and a nuisance. Let's also hear from our board and other officials about how we can make this and other ordinances stick what could be done tomorrow, this week, this month, to bring property owners into compliance. I hope there will be a response to this question tonight, and that this topic will be on upcoming agendas, until we have a viable path toward the goal of bringing errant properties into compliance. Finally, if we believe that we should put first things first, shouldn't we agree that we develop more housing opportunities in Chester, and invite families to come here to live? We are able to offer the safe and healthy environment we aspire to. Respectfully submitted, Gladys Collins. Is there anyone else that would like to?
If I can speak through Zoom? Hi. Let me get, how do I get it on?
Who's that online?
I'm Hillary Tolstoy.
Okay, thank you, Hillary. Go ahead.
I, I'm affected by both the goats and chickens in town. So, I just thought I would just throw in my piece. I drive to pick up my grandson every day at the little school. And most days, I almost hit a goat. And they are clearly multiplying. It's really dangerous. And it's sad, because they're clearly not being taken care of. As well, chickens. My, my grandkids run in a yard that is, has chicken poop all over it. And it's, it's really not healthy. My son lives across the street from chickens that are just let to run free all day long. They're all over his yard, all over his driveway. They eat his gardens. He's actually hired somebody to put stone in his garden instead of plants, because he can't keep up with, with the chickens eating it. And that's not fair. And the health issue of the, my grandchildren running around on chicken poop all day, I don't like that. So, that's just my piece.
Thank you for your comments, Hillary. Ma'am, would you like to?
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jennifer Gagliardi. I live at 1020 Andover Road, which is the property just past the Steel Plum Residence. The house that I live in is the house that my grandmother used to own. And as other people have stated, the, the goats, you know, run rampant through the neighborhood. They're in the road, they're in our yards. They're eating my perennials. They're stripping the bark off of my grandmother's lilac bush, you know, that has grown for all these years. I've called the police on several occasions. And although they were considerate enough to come to the property and witness the goats on the property themselves, they said that there is nothing that they can do about it, because there is no nuisance ordinance in Chester that says that the goats can't be on the property, eating the perennials, eating my grandmother's, you know, lilacs that were hers. In addition to the goats, you know, coming and eating my things, that's the, you know, animal pollution there, and pooping all over the yard, and coming up on the deck and trying to get through the sliding glass screen door that I have. Then there is the issue with the traffic, which does travel fast on Andover Road. The speed limit is 40. People do not go 40 on that road when they're coming down around the corner. And you can be in the yard or at the house, and all you hear is honk, honk, honk. And you know what that means? That the goats are in the road, or the dogs, I mean, choose which, that it is. There is, so that's a, you know, a noise pollution. You can't just go and sit out in the yard and enjoy your peace and quiet. There's no expectation of that in our neighborhood anymore. When you're home, you can kind of chase the goats out of the yard. But then you're left wondering what's, what's going on when I'm not home, to defend my property against the goats. You know, growing up, I grew up on Potash Brook Road. I'm 50 years old now, so I've lived on that corner of land my whole life, pretty much. And, you know, Mrs. Plum kept that property neat as a pin. When the Steels moved in, then things began to change there. I'd like to recognize that I do think there's some mental health issues that go on there. There's some hoarding that, that goes on. And, you know, whether, and it's their property. So, while, although I don't think the hoarding, which has also turned into squalor, because there is trash then that is strewn about and, and creeps onto the property that I live on, you know, while I don't find that to be pleasant, I can choose not to look at it when I drive past. But when it comes into my yard, then it becomes something that I can't ignore. And it becomes an issue, not just for myself, but for my neighbors. And none of us want something bad to happen to the animals. None of us want something bad to happen to any of us who might be involved in an accident with the animals. The police officer did ask that, you know, if we were interested, to please come and ask the town for help. Please help the police help us to protect our, our property from what's been going on, you know, up there. I won't speak for them, but my parents are here. You know, they've lived on Potash Brook Road for 50 years. My mom has cultivated her perennials, her bushes, her plants. You know, she has these flower beds that have now been eaten down by the goats. I can't even tell you how upsetting it was to go there for dinner last night, and hear her just moaning in pain about, you know, the, the personal feelings, because you're attached to the plants that you're loving. And to have them be eaten, and you can't do anything about it, because you have, you know, you have a life outside of just staying home and protecting your, your property from the goats. So, please, help us by passing a nuisance ordinance for these animals. And not just for, you know, for Andover Road or Potash Brook Road, but for anywhere in town where, where this might become an issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Got a misdirected finger, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Richard Poston. I, as my daughter said, lived on the Potash Brook Road now for 50 years. And we've seen a lot of things come and go in the neighborhood over the years. But in the last couple of years, we've had this new issue. And it isn't just an issue of goats. Up until last year, it was an issue of pigs that were going around the neighborhood, rooting in people's gardens, out in the road, running around. And another issue is dogs. They've got three or four dogs that are quite vicious. I've called them up and talked, tried to talk to them on their phone. They never answer their phone. So, it's not that we're not trying to contact them or talk to them. I don't dare go on the property. We have neighbors that have been bitten by just walking past their house, because the dogs come out and charge them and bite them. They haven't been reported yet, but we're at the end of our, our noose and neck in terms of what we're able to do. And then it comes to the point where I say, well, what can I do? They're on my, they're opening my door, there they are on my lawn, eating my plants. And I want to take out a gun and shoot them. But I, the police said, no, 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 you can't do that. I have no right to protect my property, because the town will not support me, nor will the law support me, shooting animals like that. They're not deer. I've lived with deer for 50 years, and not a problem with them. These are animals that are out of control. And I like, we, we raised sheep for 20 years. We liked them. But I took the responsibility of putting up a fence to keep them on my property, so they wouldn't do what the goats are doing. They won't put up a fence. Why? I suspect because they can't feed them. And they have to eat. So, I can't blame the goats for doing what they're doing. They want to eat, because they don't feed them. So, they have to get out and browse, and get out and eat other people's plants. So, it's, it's the issue that I'm dealing with is dealing with the people. And like I said, I'm not going to go down and talk to them, because I don't want to be bitten going down there. And I do have the trash issue, that I've talked to them about that. And they were apologetic. They didn't realize the property boundary was where it was. And they did move some of the trash back, but now the trash is going back again. So, that trash issue is a back and forth issue. But the stream is right there. And they, the goats do sometimes run up and down the stream. So, they're doing their thing up and down the stream, too. And, and where we live is not on Andover Road, but we do hear the beeping, beep, 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 as the people come around that corner, laying on their horn. And it's, and it's, it can, even, it's at night, in the evening, when you're going to bed. People are coming around the corner, it's all, the goats are there. So, again, the thing is, we were asked to come to you and say to you, we need your help, because we don't know what to do. And we're not allowed to take it into our own hands necessarily, except shoo them off your property. And that's all we can do. I did that twice today, twice. I had to go out. I figured I got them. They went down the road. Somebody came down the road with a truck, with wood on the truck. And they saw us trying to chase them, so they were, they revved their engine, and scared them down the road. So, we felt we were done with them today. Half hour later, they were back. Why? Because of all these wonderful plants that my wife Because of all these wonderful plants that my wife and I have been tending for years, that they're going to come and eat them, our roses and everything else. So thank you for your listening and your help if you can give us any.
Thank you, Mr. Poston.
Hi there, I'm Joy Bodycomb and I just purchased the property at 83 Potash Brook Road 12 weeks ago, I mean, I'm sorry, six weeks ago. So I didn't realize there was going to be this goat issue, or a couple other ones. And I was working on my property, we had seen the goats just show up, and I was working on my property on a conference call with my boss, and a goat jumped into my camper van, scared the heck out of my old dog, and a second one jumped in, so I had to jump off the call. Unfortunately, I have a great boss, so she was pretty cool about it, but it was just like, I'm sorry, but I just had to deal with that. Additionally, I'm looking at the trees, the new trees that, that a lot of the bark is being eaten off of the young trees, and I understand that could kill them. And, you know, we're trying to work and get things settled and, you know, just, just make a, a great place to be there, and the goats are really making that challenging for us, to say the very least. We also feel for them in that they need to eat too. So, but at the same time, it's just kind of a balance. So whatever we can do to help the town, we're happy to, we're new here, we're excited to be in Chester. And I do request if there's anything that can be done to help us. And I've heard about the dogs, I haven't experienced the dogs thankfully, but, but the goats are definitely a challenge. Oh, and we also thought, people kept driving by and beeping, I'm like, I wonder if they see our camper van because we're new. And then we realized, no, people were beeping at the goats in the yard, I mean, in the, in the road, so. Anyway, so that's just, been here for a little bit, glad to be here, but would love some help to manage this situation. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Andy Connolly. I'm, I'm with Joy. I just wanted to mention that there's, you mentioned rumors that there, one might be pregnant, and I'll just prove positive, there, there is one pregnant goat at least, and her name is Wyfe. Okay, we're very intimate with these goats, so I've had to pull them off by the horn, off the thing, so that's really urgent something, you know, there's going to be more goats soon.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Debbie Richardson. I live at 827 Andover Road, which is just diagonal from the property that has all these animals. I used to walk down to Andover, and I don't walk that way anymore. I have gotten stuck in my car for 20 minutes with growling barking dogs outside. We don't have cell service at our house, so you can't call. The goats are destroying everything. The bank across from us is, is washing out and all the trees are stripped. So all those trees are going to die and the bank is just going to fall. The dogs have been up on Potash, when I walk up to Potash, I walk down the other way now on the road. The goats are everywhere. We get the honking from everybody, we get people pulling in our driveway, asking who owns the goats. All of our perennials and shrubs are getting stripped. We've had pigs, we've had horses, and we can't do anything about it. We've called the cops, they say we have to build a fence. My husband brings them down to the house, brings them back. We've roped pigs, brought them back, we've roped horses, brought them back, we brought goats back, nothing. And it's destroying our land and I can't get out of the house, so.
Thank you.
As for the dogs, I just want to say real quick, the town of Chester does have a dog ordinance that deals with vicious dogs and dogs that are not maintained on property. So the dog issue can be dealt with aside from this ordinance. What was that? Have you been calling the police department and reporting the dogs? Okay, please do, all right, because the, the dogs can be dealt with, we have a dog ordinance, and the select board has had to deal with vicious dogs. There is a history of that and some precedent with that, so, so I'm happy to talk more about that, but the dogs we can maybe do something about.
We could look into that.
Yeah, absolutely, that could be quicker than this, so, anyway, go ahead.
Beverly Lauren, 560 Andover Road, and they've been down our way. Everything I've heard here tonight is true, the goats have got to go. Number one, what Deb just said, if you think you got a flood problem, they have gone through the cambium layer on most of the trees on the edge of the river, it's going to go, it's going to go, so just something to think about. And this is historic, and I, and I heard Mr. Poston say this, this isn't just today, this goes back to when Mark Phelps was alive. He was an advocate, he came to my house a lot, he didn't want to see the horses go through what the horses went through. Nobody can prove this, I truly believe those horses are buried in the ground not far from their well. In 2017, before Mark died, he was an advocate for the people in the neighborhood. 2018, Larry Silvan up on East Hill, I just happened to hit it right, I was going by and he slammed on his brakes and he went in that yard and he said, you get those horses up to my fields. Andy LaValle, somebody I know that worked for him at the time, said those horses, there were two of them, flourished in those fields. Then they came back and then they ended up, I have a friend who now doesn't live in Weston, but she did at the time, Lisa Branmire, some of you might have known Branmire's Mountainside Lodge. She went by every day. We worked with Lucy McKenzie, and Bob had mentioned this, about Humane Society, they got involved, Clermont, Vat, two of them came over. I had the report, I kept it for three years, and then I just kind of let it go somewhere. That was in, that was in either, it was just before COVID that the state got involved. The state went, because COVID hit the end and the beginning of 2020, or two, yeah, 2020. So they went, they were there, March, they made a visit there in March of 2020. They put a note on the door and then we were put in lockdown and that was the end of the horse issue. The second horse ended up in the ground January, right before they showed up. You can see it because you go by and that's riverbed gravel, you can't dig down, they dug a hole, they put that horse in there, and then you, now you've got a mound of dirt. So you got, prove me wrong, got two horses in the ground right next to their well. They live there now. What I'd like to know is where the owner is. These horses, they've got to go, they got to go. Because flood issue and they are ruining all of my neighbor's stuff, so.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Carol Theodore. I live next, I live next to Bev and on the corner of Andover and Potash Brook Road. Yeah, I get the dogs in the yard and they bark at me when I try to chase them away. I too have gardens, I plant vegetables to feed my family. I've got videos of the goats running through my yard. There's about a 10-foot space between my barn and my front door, and the video shows all these goats barreling through. I'm pretty stable on my feet, but my husband is not. If we were out in that yard, we'd be flattened. I mean, we can't go out and chase the goats out of our yard. So you know from all the people who live in that area that this is a problem. One solution I'd like to suggest for you is to create an impounding ordinance. If the goats are on private property or in the road endangering traffic, they should be impounded. It's the town's problem, it shouldn't be private property owner's problem. And if the people who own the goats don't have the money to retrieve them, then the goats get sold, killed, whatever happens to impounded animals. They do this in other places, they should be doing this here.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you.
My name's Eric Richardson. I live at 827 Andover Road, which is just across the street from the property we're talking about. So far tonight, everything that you've heard is accurate, except that it has not been going on for months, it's been going on for at least eight years to some degree. As mentioned, all different types of farm animals, but also dogs on the loose. Now, the, the vegetation that the goats have been destroying is, is significant. It can, someone might say, oh, it's a tree, it's, it's a small tree. Well, that small tree is somebody else's property. When I hear of perhaps people going onto somebody else's property, cutting a, a tree down for firewood, and people are getting in trouble, big trouble, for damaging other people's woodlots, well, that's what's happening now. It's just on a smaller level, but they're still just destroying other people's landscape property. I've given up on my own. It's, it's very emotional for us because we've been going through it for, for so long. Noise, unfortunately, it's not just the animals that are the noise, it's the homeowners themselves. We don't, we don't sit out on our porch anymore, we can't sit out at nighttime to have a nice dinner. It's just whether it's dogs in the property or just the noise of the neighbors yelling. Let's see, dogs are not on leashes, nothing is. We have literally goat parades on Andover Road at least twice a day. And I counted 13 the other day from baby babies to old billy goats. I don't feel like we as homeowners, but myself, should have to spend a lot of money to create fences to keep somebody else's property off of ours. I don't feel like we should have to erect either large fences or electric fences to keep somebody else's animals off of ours, that's what's happening. Their animals are coming on our yard, they're not following what I would consider good I don't feel like we should have to spend a lot of money just to keep somebody else's animals off of ours. I have talked to the person and in speaking with them, they sound very apologetic, bending over backwards, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep, we, we try, and I suggest electric fences. He says that they're, they don't work. I've witnessed them use, using non-electrified metal fences years ago, totally ineffective. They would just jump right over them. About three weeks to a month ago, this was right before, right after we had the big snows, they were in our yard, I dragged them back up to their own yard and I approached the owner. He came out, I walked him down to our property, I showed them the damage that they're doing to our shrubs. He said he would replace them. It's not the replacement value that I'm concerned about, it's them keeping their animals on their property. It was brought, it was mentioned earlier about horses, their horses had the Kentucky Derby right across our yard and just left big horse divots right through the, the yard. And I don't own a championship golf course, that's not my point, the point is, they left huge hoofprints over the lawn. Well, I approached him on that issue, he apologized, he said, you want me to fix it? I said, yes, well, that never happened. And nor has any form of, again, I'm not concerned about the reimbursement of the plants that they're eating, but they're not going to follow through with what they say. They're apologetic, but it doesn't go anywhere. On the day that I brought the goats back to their house, he said that he was going to close them up and put them in the garage. And four hours later, they were right back out in the road again, so they just don't get it. They just don't get it. Whatever we can come up with, it might take a little time, but for the sake of everybody in the neighborhood, I just hope that we can come up with something to help this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I just want to reiterate something that Julie had mentioned earlier also, on the dogs, there, there is an ordinance, if you see the dogs loose, make the call, and even if you have to do it every single day, there, there should be some action on the dogs no matter what. If there's three vicious dogs that are roaming around the neighborhood there, make the calls, keep making the calls, whatever it takes, and we're going to check into it on our end also to see what's been happening there as far as the dogs or the records of calls and stuff. Is there anyone here or online that would still like to speak to this?
My name is Karen Orchid. I have had problems with the dog, I've had problems with the horses, I've had problems with the pig. And like everybody else has said, this isn't just a few months, this is years, starting with the horses first. The pig last year, I chased home four times on a Sunday afternoon. The pig is not Wilbur, this pig is huge, this tall and broad, not mean, but not easy to herd. To get it home, I had to keep tapping it on its side and walking with it, and I get it all the way home, back to the yard. I'd call up Tom, this is when he would still answer the phone. He wouldn't come and help me, he didn't come to the yard once on that Sunday. I called the police, they came. They went down and talked to him, I guess, I don't know, they didn't come back and tell me. But the pig, again, the next following week was in the garage. He's around the dooryard and I have to take him home because nobody will come, nobody will help from the house. The pig issue is solved, I guess he's bacon, I don't know. No more pigs out there that far as I can see. And the goats, I go for a walk every day, 7:30 to 8:30, and I do it specifically at that time, so that I'm hoping the dog will be hitched. The white dog that is there is the one that has bitten me twice in the arm. He circles behind me, he doesn't come at me from the front, he comes up and comes behind me and grabs my arm. The last time he bit me, my arm swelled up, he didn't break the skin, but he left all his teeth marks, all his teeth impressions through my down coat and a heavy sweater. He didn't rip my coat, there's just one small little tear in the, in the thing, but how he clamped on to me bruised my arm and made it swell. I did call the police, they did come and look at it, they did see my arm, they did go down and talk to Tom. And the first time that it bit me, it didn't, it broke the skin just a little tiny bit and it didn't, you know, damage my coat again, it just bit me hard. And I called on that time too. And the goats, when I go for a walk between 7:30 and 8:30, I'm herding them out of the road as I go by so that cars can get by. One day they were stopped both directions because the goats were right across the road coming from the coming from the swamp area. And they're so used to cars that they're not scared, they're not worried. You actually clap your hands and get them out of the road. And the little babies, you have to push in the heiny because they don't know any better to get going. They're not scared. And, you know, it's just, all I want to do is go for a walk on a dirt road in the morning, and it just seems like it's a problem. And it's not the owner of the house. The owner of the house is an old woman that's in the hospital, that's been in the hospital for ten weeks with an infection in her leg that she needed a skin graft. And the skin graft is so big that it's taking forever to heal. And she needs an operation in her hip, and that was canceled because of this infection in her leg. They couldn't do the operation. So it's not the owner of the property. It's her daughter that lives there. And I don't want to be a neighbor that causes trouble for other neighbors because we live in a small community. And usually, when you talk to people and let them know what's happening, I think that's why we don't have an ordinance. It's because usually, this gets resolved before five years. This is ongoing, this just keeps ongoing. And if we don't do something now, it's just going to be happening until somebody really gets hurt. And that's a shame. So thank you for listening.
Karen, when were the dog bites? Roughly, what year were the dog bites?
This winter.
It was this winter.
Anyone else for any comments?
Can I comment as a citizen?
Sure.
Not as a select board member. I live at seven twenty-nine Andover Road. And I thank you all for coming in. I've seen the goats. It's a daily thing. They don't come in my yard. They've been in my yard once, probably because I have dogs and the dogs keep them out. I've seen the damage to the trees along the river. I had no idea that they were getting in people's gardens. This has been very eye-opening for me. I, you know, I just thought it was, I didn't know there was damaging happening, damage happening. So thank you all for coming in. I can attest to the issue with the dogs as well. The dogs used to come in my yard. They don't anymore. I don't know what's changed there. But this is an ongoing, the pig has cornered me in my yard. The pig who's now bacon has cornered me in my yard once, and I went down and talked to Tom about it. And the pig never came back. So again, I had no idea that this was as severe as it is. But it's definitely, it's, everything that's been said makes perfect sense, and I have my own experience with it as well. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else?
Matt Gorsey had his hand up, but I don't see it up anymore.
Saw it before, Sue. But Matt, you still out there? He might have stepped away. If I see his hand come back up, we'll get him back involved with the conversation. There's some really compelling stories about what's going on. It's amazing that no one has been hurt yet, and there hasn't been more trouble than what you've mentioned, which already seems like it's wreaking havoc with the neighborhood. The erosion, the health of the trees and shrubs, the danger on the traffic, the river pollution, the animal cruelty, what's going on there. I mean, I understand that the police are also looking for an ordinance, but I find it hard to believe that there's absolutely nothing that the police could do as far as traffic and safety and a few of the other items that we talked about. But that'll be a conversation that we'll have with our police department to see what their take is on this. We, as a select board, do have the authority to put an ordinance together to help with this problem. In our packet, we have a, an example from Berry City ordinance, which is pretty comprehensive, been pretty involved, but it is a good start as far as drafting our own ordinance, because it seems like the consensus of the board would be to implement some kind of ordinance to help with a situation like this in this part of the town, but also in, up, all over the town, because one of the, one of the subjects was off High Street on another part of town with the chickens and the neighbor there, too. We'll get back to this. I just, Matt, you're back. Put your hand up. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, sorry about that. I had a phone call I had to take that came in the middle of the conversation.
Go ahead, Mr. Gorsey.
So what I'm having difficulty believing is that somehow there isn't some state law in place about public endangerment of loose livestock with the agricultural background that this state has. It's been a dairy state since, you know, the seventeen hundreds. There has to be some law on the books about the public endangerment of loose livestock, such as goats, cows, pigs, sheep. That's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsey. We will investigate that end of it to see if there's anything that we're missing as far as our town goes of any type of laws or ordinances that might be in place. We will check into that to see what the, what the story would be on that. But even if there is, I think an ordinance like the one that's before us, the example from Berry City, might not be a bad idea to pursue to help with the issues on a local level, because there's a lot more, more teeth, it actually seems, in this ordinance than anything that I know of or that there is right now, but.
Well, there certainly is. There's a couple of state laws. A, if the animals are off your present, your property, they all have to be tagged. And obviously, none of the animals are tagged, so that's a Department of Ag thing. For just animals loose like this, it's ten dollars every time. And obvious, and sounds like it could rack right up there. And that's a state law. And if there is a billy goat, if it's a male, then the price goes up.
These are state regulations?
Yeah.
I think one of the issues that this helps with, in the little bit of conversation that Tom and I have had to, been able to have about this, is the impoundment piece. So you're not taking these goats and putting them in the back of the cruiser. And where are you taking them? You know, we can impound, but where are they going? So places that you can take them, typically, you need to have an ordinance in effect before they will take. So the town has to put some form of ordinance or something in place and then make an arrangement as far as who is picking up the wildlife, or the farm animals, where are they going, much like you dealt with with the vicious dog, right? When we had the vicious dog a few years ago, a couple of you will remember that. Where do you go to take a vicious dog? We found that very quickly, right? Nobody will take one. Same thing here. So there's some, there's some research that needs to be done. There's one thing to adopt an ordinance. There's another thing to be able to put it into effect and actually enforce it. And to actually enforce it, we have to have a mechanism of picking them up and a place to take them. And that has to be documented through the, has to be able to be documented in order to perfect anything through the court system. So there are some pieces that have to come into place, and an ordinance is one of those pieces that helps.
And it almost seems like, in this case, even with an ordinance in place, that there's some other issues with the folks that are at this residence that I don't think the ordinance is going to even help on this case. It will probably end up being, taking the animals or whatever off, you know, off the property and away from them, because it just doesn't seem, no matter what they say, that they're not following through. Or they don't even have the capacity to care for these animals. And I understand what you're saying, Julie. So you could have an ordinance in place, but you have to have all the background and all the legal stuff that makes that enforceable, and the process of, you know, where do you take it? Who's going to take it? Who's going to be the administrator of this? Who's going to run this? I imagine something like that, we could designate the police department.
Right. Well, the ordinance is one piece, but it's the practicality. So if somebody calls and says we've got twelve or sixteen goats, so how does the police department go get them? Like, somebody has to be designated as the person that goes and gets the goats. I'm assuming that is some kind of a farm trailer or farm equipment. And then where are the goats taken to? So those, those pieces that we don't tend to think about, it's like, here's an ordinance, go pick up the goats. Okay, what do we do with them? So that's the back end piece that has to be figured out. I'm sure that there are municipalities that do something. So it's just a matter of figuring out what is that and making those connections. That's going to be the big part of this on the back end, because we're going to hopefully put some kind of an ordinance into effect, and we want to be able to enforce and hopefully enforce sooner rather than later and deal with the situation. But we've got to have all those pieces. And a lot of times, places will not take a municipality's problem animals unless there is an ordinance in things in effect, because they're going to want payment. And so it's just a whole trickle-down.
The structure for fines is pretty much, that would be in place because we already do that on certain ordinances already.
Correct.
As far as the fines go. We're talking more about the animals themselves and.
Correct. But the place where we, where we take the goats is going to charge the municipality. So there has to be a mechanism in place. We found that with the vicious dog. The town had to pay for that until we could figure out what was going on. So there just has to be those mechanisms in place so that we can actually enforce at the end of the day. At the end of the day, you want there to be enforcement. So all those pieces have to line up. It starts with an ordinance. Doesn't have to be Berry. Doesn't have to be this extensive, but it's got to start with something.
So I've had, thank you for being here. I've had a lot of thoughts and a dozen questions, none of which seem appropriate for this avenue. But areas of exploration would include looking at the Department of Ag, looking at various state regulations, no matter how old, and looking to see if there's something on the book somewhere that will support what we need to have happen here. I think there's a lot of conversation that would be valuable around fences and property and zoning and what is already there or not there and what there might be an appetite for as far as what kind of fences are called for when. Again, looking back years, it feels like there's a lot of valuable research that could be done to find a foot to stand on to start to move forward. In the short term, I want to reinforce what everybody else said, which is, please call about the dogs, because that's where we can start to see how this works and see if we can get some movement somewhere to support you guys. And yeah, developing an ordinance feels like a good place to start, but there's a lot we have to figure out about how we can get the most robust, enforceable language in there while not creating an ordinance for one situation. It is imperative that we, as the select board, address this issue in a way that supports the future of the town and future residents and other neighborhoods and other situations. So while it would be wonderful to look out and say, we're going to write an ordinance that says exactly fourteen goats can't be on Andover Road, and that's not going to serve anybody's purpose going forward. But thank you. And I feel like, hopefully, there's traction we can get somewhere to come at this beyond just a basic ordinance, because it feels like there's more to address here.
Sir, just come on up to the microphone and give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Eustace Theodore. I've been privileged to live on the Andover Road. I want to make a very simple observation. The knowledge that were shared by my fellow citizens, to my fellow citizens who are on the board, really described program, described a situation in which something has been going on for a long time, and the results at the moment come up with some ideas, one of which my wife shared, other ideas that other people have shared, observations of what's going on. Let me try to put a simple structure in place that I think is required for success. There has to be an end-to-end discussion and decision made, which focuses on what's going wrong, what are the possible changes, which are the best possible activities. Julie really, really hit the point. These are, these are things that if you don't, if you don't work out where things are going to go, they won't get there. So we have to take what we've been told tonight, and we have to ask the question, what are the things, what's happening? What are the things that need to change? In what direction do they need to change? And how are we going to get that to happen? How does the money that comes in get directed toward the problem? And the only way that I've ever seen that's been successful for communities to move forward is to identify those things that are going wrong, need to change, have a plan, be ready to execute the entire plan at the start of the action, not, we'll work it out later. The plan is in place, it's well-known, well-discussed, they, there's a high probability of success. Without that, we'll be back here talking about it, and I'll come just because it's interesting to me to see my fellow citizens try to actually do something. So congratulations to you all for taking this responsibility on. And thank you to everyone who spoke, who gave us the start of what needs to be probably a one-person task. Sit down and think about those steps. Write it up and bring it in and let people criticize it. Take it back, redo it, and by the second draft, you probably will be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Interestingly enough, that's what I was doing. I was drafting a plan of attack for this particular situation, and the things I came up with is identification, first contact, second contact, and then action. The identification would be the neighbors, identify the problem, talk to the owner, and then talk to the police. And then the police go, give a warning. Second contact would be a ticket and/or fines. And then action would be removal, which would require some kind of a trailer, manpower, a truck to haul these animals. And then impound them, which would require a fenced area, feed, care, and then disposal ultimately. But to the gentleman's point who just spoke, I think that it's fairly straightforward thinking through this, but it's going to require more time than the six of us have sitting here to do that and to come up with something that's going to be viable and enforceable.
Well, and we can, Preston and I can draft an ordinance. I'm just not going to spend the time or funds if the board does not have the appetite for the ordinance, which is really what this is about. So if you have the appetite for the ordinance, Preston and I will work together to get you a draft that fits Chester and has all those pieces thoughtful.
I would think at this point, an inaction on our part would not be, not be, not, not, not at answer. I think we have to do, in this case, even if there might be some law or regulation that's on a state level, that's fine also. But as I've gone through this Berry City ordinance, and a lot of times when we have ordinances and issues that come up, we kind of look to see how other towns have attacked this and how they've addressed it and stuff. And it's pretty comprehensive. It has addressed all the issues that you brought up, that the gentleman brought up, and maybe some of these will not apply to Chester, and it might need some tweaking, but it gives us a good base to look at and a place to start, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Because obviously, this has been a problem in different places in the state over the years, and it has been addressed by different towns in different ways. So it gives us some kind of a basis to start our process and a place to begin. To Julie's point, as long as the board, the consensus of the board. To Julie's point, as long as the board, the consensus of the board is to address this with an ordinance, then we will go in that direction. And I, I assume that's the consensus of the board. Is there anybody against anything, like an ordinance for this? Mr. Whalen?
Can I just real, really quickly, while Ben's coming up? I did a quick search. 20 VSA, starting with 3341, does deal with loose animals. It's pretty antiquated, but there may be some things in there that would be helpful in the meantime. There are fines that can be levied, and the animals can be impounded based upon this.
Those are state statutes, Tim?
Yes, specific to different types of animals, but goats, cattle horses, sheep, goats, and swine are all included.
You have an impoundment facility.
Well, it says, it says a private landowner has the right to impound the animals in their own place, and.
Anybody want to become goat?
Anybody want some goats?
If they come by my house, they will be put in a pen. I have a bigger goat pen, and I had goats, but the bear was eating them.
So Bob?
Sir, hang, hang in there. We can't have a discussion between Julie's because of the microphone and what's, what's happening, so.
If somebody wants to read this language.
We'll, we'll look into it when we draft the ordinance, Tim. Thank you.
Ben.
Sorry, Ben. Ben Whalen, former Select Board member once upon a time, who's dealt with enacting ordinances, and it's a time-consuming thing. And also, the conversation that you'll all then have afterwards is, what is the teeth of it, and how do we actually enforce that? And what is then the cost of the town of enforcing it if they simply say, we're not paying it? So in, in words of that, so he found something under Title 20, under Title 13, Chapter 8, talks about humane treatment and talks about the pound keeper. And I'm sure those are things that we've looked into. I think an ordinance is a good place to have something established, so you do have the teeth there, but I would also, $10 of a fine every time there's something out, and the potential of that having state backing, and if there's warrants that then can create it from that, I think are a good place to have those conversations while working on that ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
So if we have an appetite for an ordinance, we could go that route. And Preston Bistro is our zoning administrator. He's here, and he has some experience with ordinances and writing them, and maybe we could task him with the job of going through a Berry City ordinance or an ordinance that's similar, that makes sense for Chester. When I looked over this, it was, it almost seemed a little too comprehensive, but, I mean, they're talking about turtles and reptiles and a million other things, but they, it is the city. They have the resources probably to deal with this, and they probably come across it a lot more often than we would. But it does talk about issues that seem exactly like what we're facing here, and with the fines and the process that has to happen legally, to the point of finally impounding the animals and stuff. But all that has to be, like Julie was saying, in place before we could even start this, or be, be part of this whole project, to make sure that all the steps that we would have to take are doable and enforceable, and that there is some, that there's, all, all the questions are answered that might come up as far as this ordinance goes. So I would ask that Preston be tasked with the job of coming up with a Chester Town ordinance instead of a Berry City ordinance, is to help address issues like this that are happening and similar ones that could happen in the future for the benefit of the whole town. Does that seem like a, a good idea to the board?
Yeah, sure. Preston needed something to do, I think.
I, I also would like to just thank everybody for coming in and telling us your story, because the motivation that the Select Board takes from people when they're, they come and share their stories with us, and, and they voice their opinions and their concerns, is a lot more powerful when you're here in person and you talk to us and tell us what's going on. Had there been no one in the room, it's hard to know exactly what was happening or what's hap, you know, what was going on and stuff, but from the stories that we heard, it's, it's a serious issue. I'd, I'd be tempted, oh, I better not say what I'm going to say, because it'd be, yeah. It's, it's a hard thing. It's your lives, it's your, it's your neighborhood, it's everything that's in that, and this isn't the first thing that's happened in that area of town also. So it just seems like you're getting a double whammy on this one here, and neither one of them is, is, is fair, it seems. We're going to do what we can. We're going to, we're going to try to get some answers on statutes that are maybe in place, laws that are in place. Dogs, make the phone calls, keep that up, do what you can for it, because that is one thing that we can issue. We'll look up to see what else that possibly could be used at this point, but we will also pursue the direction of a, a city, a town ordinance to address issues like this. And we'll keep you informed, and it will be on our agendas as we go forward. It's going to take us a little while to go through all the steps and to make sure that it's done right, but we're going to start with it as far as the city ordinance goes and as far as looking into the other issues that we maybe could do before anything else happens to. And it, and if issues happen, even if it's not dog-related, make a report. I mean, call the police. They could come there and say they can't do anything, but at least it'll document that, that there was something happened, that there was a complaint made, and they still have to put that down, and they still have to write up a report or do what they have to do. And sometimes there, there, there might be something else that they can't do. I, we'll, we'll have that discussion, we'll see what's going on. Was someone else that wanted to speak again? You'd have to come up to the mic again.
In all fairness to the police, when they did come for the pigs and the horse, they did say that they could do a $10 fine, but when they can't feed their animals to pay a $10 fine, it just didn't seem, it, I would rather they paid it for food than to give it for a fine. So the police did offer that, but, you know, I just said no, I didn't want to, so.
Thank you, Ms. Orkin.
Thank you.
And thanks again for everybody coming and speaking their mind tonight. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our financial update for the first quarter of this year. Everybody in their packet had a financial update. Well, we'll give it a minute so folks could head out.
You don't have to.
You could, you could bail guys if you want.
Yeah, they're here for you. Yeah, they're going to approve it and then just deal with Debbie on the liquor license. I'm assuming you're talking about the liquor license. You don't have to stay with that.
There's still some riveting stuff coming, if you'd like. Before the survey all last week. Thank you so much, Steve.
Prejudice against Italians. I mean, this is, this is obvious sex prejudice, right?
On Stalin.
It's just sex prejudice.
There you go.
They will do that to mayors, right?
There you go.
That's right, mayors have a free run.
There you go.
That's a pretty good.
Yep, it is. It does work for Preston. But.
A lot to it. No, no.
Yeah, just got a bottle of heat until we get them on green.
Goes back to personal responsibility. All right, the next item is our financial update for the first quarter of 2024. I see it's in a new format as opposed to our, the old format. It does help. It seems like it's broken down. It's pretty clear to follow things through and stuff. You get a summary for the first few pages, and then you get into a little more detail as you go on. Julie, can you take us to our first quarter update?
I can. It's the Q1, so, I mean, as we all know, there's not a whole lot that happens in quarter one. I mean, at the end of the day, what we want is where it is 77%. That's where we want to be, 77% unexpended, I should say. So Lori did, we are playing with a new format for reporting. So you do have a summary of all departments at the beginning, and then you can get into detail by department in the pages to follow. Again, nothing riveting to point out. You know, you may see a couple things off, a fair amount of is, in quarter one especially, you have timing issues. So something a previous quarter may have been paid, you know, in April instead of March, and this time the bill came in in March. So you have those timing issues. But Q1, you know, we don't, tax revenue is not in yet, so you know, your revenue is down, but that's all standard. So we are right where we should be as of end of quarter one.
The question, because the, the, the top section of facilities.
Where are you looking, Peter?
Okay, we're going to, well, that's, we got, you have to, following the format, we have to look at two places. So if we're down to facilities expense, facilities.
Are you on the summary sheet?
I'm on the summary sheet.
Okay.
Okay, but then when you go down, to actually go to facilities, it doesn't.
Oh, in the detail?
The same number. You know, to break down, you know, for instance, you know, the zoning is, is way up, but you can see that that's legal.
Peter, where are you seeing the facility? Oh, there we go, facilities expense.
Yep, there you go. But then there should be down the bottom, the number should, it's proof out something where it's gone.
And you're looking to match the 71990?
I'm looking to match the, the low percentage.
The summary with the detail?
Yeah, the summary with the detail doesn't seem to quite match.
Is it off by facilities payroll?
Is it off by facilities payroll?
Yeah, because that's separate.
Facilities payroll would be 18945.
No, the facilities, the facilities payroll looks fine. The facilities itself.
Now, the difference between the 9844 and the 71999, it may be the amount of payroll. Because facilities payroll is up in the payroll. Not included in the summary on the front.
Okay.
We have lumped payroll together for a very specific reason. It's our biggest line item in our budget.
Well, no.
Payroll, so I like to see that separate.
All right, well, you have facilities expense, and it's at, and currently 18%. That's what I'm, that's the number that I'm looking at.
18% expended.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're looking at the percent, okay.
The summary.
The, the exact numbers don't, I don't have to jive with that. It's the percentage because we set the budget.
So 18% expended on. I'm not under, I just not, I'm not following you, Peter. I'm just not following what you're saying. I'm not getting it. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, okay, so my, my question is, because it was brought up before, that he was working a lot at the fire department. Is this not getting expended because he's being charged at the fire department? Or did we take a lot of vacation, or what? You know, I don't understand, I don't understand the difference in that number compared to the.
But I don't know what number you're looking at. That's my problem. What number are you looking at?
All right, so let's, let's go back up. Okay, so we're going to go back up. So we're on page, oh, no page numbers.
Page one.
Page facilities, facilities expense is at 18.6.
Has been spent of that, that $35,398.
18.6 has been spent. So that is not, okay, go ahead.
All right, so where, when I get back to the other part of facilities, the numbers all match up being 70%. In the seventies, which.
So it's that 18.6%, if you go to the detail.
Yep.
And you see general facilities expense.
General facilities expense.
You see facilities payroll, general facilities expense, that's your 18.6.
What page is that, Julie?
That's the second to the last page. I will have Lori.
Number.
Number these for you. Second to the, no, I'm sorry, not second to the last, third, uh, third to the last. So page 13, I believe, if you're looking for. In your facilities maintenance detail.
18.6, same number.
Same number.
There are two sectors, payroll, that's what Julie was saying, I think there's payroll and there's expense.
Is that answering it?
Yep, it's answering.
Okay.
Is this a spreadsheet, Julie?
I, yes, she's got it in a spreadsheet, yes.
So she could easily add another column and just number everything, just add the numbers up all the way down.
Oh, sure.
So that we can say line number 285.
Absolutely. I can absolutely have her do that.
That would be very helpful, because I get lost when I look at money.
Absolutely. No, let me have her, me make a note on that. Otherwise, the reorganization's great. I like it. I feel like it's easier to read. Page numbers and line numbers would help.
Julie, on the summary page, the, the second page.
Yep.
That, the, the last line, net included loss or something?
Net income loss.
So what's that, minus 118, 1802.6%?
Because you haven't received revenue yet. You haven't billed taxes.
Oh, okay.
So if you look at your balance sheet right now, you're, would you go, oh, my word, what?
So the few dollars, okay, that's what that, that's why that number is that crazy.
That's correct. So you don't start seeing that until you start reviewing quarter three, because we don't bill until July, and they're due in September.
Then the interest income on their government revenue, that, is that because of the TAN though, that we had a budget of $60,000 in interest income? What is that?
Where, I'm sorry, where are you?
About the third page in?
Yep.
Number 287.
Income interest, oh, one.
Oh, one, oh, three, one, five, oh, one point five three.
Yep, so what is your question?
What is that interest from?
That is, if you remember, at the end of last year, the bank changed our interest that we earn on the money in our accounts. In prior years, we were not really earning much interest on that.
Yep.
And when they switched to M&amp;T, M&amp;T said, no, wait a minute, there's, you know, four months, five months out of the year where we're sitting with many millions of dollars because we've collected tax revenue, and that money sits there. So they started putting us in at a much higher interest rate. They shifted our category. And so now we are actually making money on that money, which we should be. So you're going to start seeing that as a revenue.
And then administration, other expenses, when they talk about the TAN interest, we only budgeted $2,500, but we're already paying over $30,000 in interest for that?
On, in that, in the same page?
No, one, two, three, four, the fourth page in, under administration, other expenses, oh, one, one, zero, one, five, eight, two, zero, TAN interest. It's like 1,200% over.
Oh, let me ask Lori about that. My, that's, there's an issue with that number. That's not right. Let me ask her about that.
That seems like a lot of.
Yeah, that's not right. We just took out the TAN.
Isn't it the interest we're paying on the flood money? Could that be the interest we're paying on the flood?
If it is, it's got to go into flood expense, not general.
This is TAN interest.
Yeah, it's, would have to go into the flood account, not general. That's probably what that is. Yeah, it could be. I'll have Lori look at that.
Under insurance expenses, uh, our co-insurance program?
Mm-hmm.
Is that unusually high? Because it seems like we only budgeted 112, we're already up to 45.
Well, remember, you hit your deductible first.
And that's why it goes up like.
So the beginning is usually higher, and then it gradually starts to come down.
Then once you hit the deductible, it calms down, so it'll probably run close.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Because if that kept up, I was going to say.
No, we'd be way over, and then we'd have all kinds of issues.
You know, it's good to see the police revenue, the court fees are actually.
Absolutely.
Showing up. We used to always worry about the budget of $40,000 for court fees. We're up to $60,000, but we've gotten over 16,000 in revenue from court fees. And one other issue, the, the fire department salaries, are those all in there, or is that just accrued? Because I know with a lot of times, they were waiting till the end of the year to do fires.
No, we, we accrue, we are accruing differently now.
So it's that low? It's only 12,000?
At this point, this is quarter one, so January, February, March should include. Yep.
But seems low, considering we budgeted 107.
Well, there have not been as many calls.
Thanks, Ben. Anybody have any questions or concerns, anything on, on the budget?
I actually was able to take some time to look through it. It looks great. It makes perfect sense. Everything's at that 77.
Yeah.
Area, and the anomalies are pretty clear. So thank you.
Good.
Looks good.
Everybody all set?
Yep.
Next item on our agenda is a discussion regarding our ARPA funds. I know this fund started out at over $900,000, and there was, in the beginning, there was questions and comments and. questions and comments and some input that we had regarding how we were gonna spend it all. We have a pretty good detailed sheet of where most of, a lot of the money went, what's expended up to date and the balance that's there. Julie, can you take us through this?
Sure. So as I know you are all aware, we need to decide where our money, where the remaining amount, where the remaining funds are going to get set. We need to allocate them by 12/31 this year and they need to be expended by 12/31 of '26. We are roughly 170,000 remaining in our ARPA funds. That is after, as you may recall in the budget this year, we took half of that principal payment for the bond. We decided to come out of ARPA to give the taxpayers a partial break this year, the second half introduces next year. So after that 88,000 is out and then if you approve the purchase, use of these funds for the purchase of the fire department compressor, that would leave the 167, so 167,8. So we just need to have a conversation around if there are thoughts, if there are ideas of their use of these.
Can I ask questions? Before anybody else jumps in? Having not been here during the time that the ARPA funds became part of your lives, rules and regulations. Would we be allowed to allocate ARPA funds to, for instance, the Economic Development Fund? Or is that not a use of ARPA funds? So is that expended?
No, so they have to be dedicated to something specific. You can't just put them in the capital fund, you can't just put them in reserve. They have to be dedicated to something specific.
So housing development seed money?
If we had a housing development and we were going to do a housing development in the next two years and we knew we were gonna do that.
But it can't go into the fund, the pot?
Can't go into just, no, no, it's gotta be for something specific. I know, I know.
Okay.
Like a solar field. Which is maybe.
What are you thinking, Lee?
I don't know, we, we haven't heard from current owners.
We will on Monday.
I mean, that, that balance that's remaining, considering, assuming that we go with what's listed to for state or expense. We don't have to decide today, but we have to.
No, but it's good to have the, I mean.
Discussion, yeah.
I've been sitting here for three months wondering if it could go to the development fund, so now that we know that it can't.
Right.
Should we talk about the compressor though?
Yes, we would like.
That'll be, that'll be coming up on the.
No, that's on the.
That's on, that's on the ARPA, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll, yeah, Ben, why don't you come on?
So we're gonna have Ben Whalen, who's acting chief, give us a little background on the compressor for the fire department.
Good evening again. So I think you got a little memo in your packet about our, our breathing air compressor. So for the past three to five years, I would say, we've kind of known it was near end of life. It's, I think the tag on it says 1989, so it's had a, a pretty good life. It was a Poseidon, which is a Vermont-made company. The gentleman's out of business, there's no parts. And every single maintenance person has essentially said, we're not gonna touch it. So Steve did give it a, a last go to see if we could make something happen with it on our own end and that wasn't gonna happen. So at that point, we started doing some research. So conversation of why is a breathing air compressor so much more expensive than an actual compressor is because it is compressing air that then has to meet regulations of NFPA and OSHA to then be compliant breathing air. And it goes through a whole bunch of different filtrations, et cetera, and runs at a, a pretty high pressure. So the, the air in our cylinders is 4,500 PSI and then our storage cylinders are 6,000 PSI. We have the fill station, so I think when, when Chief Wilson initially approached this, the number was around 120? Somewhere in that ballpark. The grant funds that we have put in for, and we've applied for the AFG grant, I think, three times on this specific item. Was it that higher dollar, I, higher dollar number based on replacing our fill station and the air compressor? Our fill station is fine for our needs, it will continue to be for, I would say, probably another 20 years. The, the compressor is what we're looking for. So did some research, got quotes from different, different groups. The compressor that I'm proposing, it was funny, even the, the vendors that couldn't sell me this compressor said, I would, I can't sell you this compressor, but I would actually recommend this one, which I found pretty interesting because normally they just want the sale. The other part is the turnaround time. Some compressors are about nine, 10 months out. They're hopeful that if we place the order being an emergency, they would have it here within a week, which is a, a pretty big thing. When the building was built, three-phase was put into where the compressor needs to be, which is the power that we'll be, be needing for it. So the electrical is already there, should be pretty much a drop it in, test it, run air tests that will then need to go out for, for sample and then go from there. So my request is with installation should be no more than 50,000. I think that's, there's enough, there's like $600 extra in there for installation, which I don't think we'll need those parts, but it would cover that in whole. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Do you have a backup plan? Or are you filling your cylinders now?
So we've looked at a lot of different things. Right now, reached out to Springfield and they've said that we can go over there to fill, fill cylinders as we need to. And then if we have any type of incident going on, we'd be using mutual aid of a, we have a couple of different mutual aids departments that have a cascade system, so they have it mobile, they could come fill cylinders for us on scene. Anytime we have a building fire, that's part of our complement that, that comes in. But right now, using Springfield for day-to-day and it's just part of the nice partnership we have with folks. We did look into the idea of could we lease stored air? So we looked into Airgas, looked into Manoxi and some other vendors to see if they could come drop off those size. Right, so for us to fill our 4,500 pound, or 4,500 PSI cylinders, you need a large 6,000 PSI cylinder to get the volume out of it. No one's got that volume cylinder to come drop off, so.
We have that, we have the cylinder, you just need the compressor or does the compressor come?
We have four, we have four DOT cylinders for the 6,000 PSI, so we're, we're good on that.
You have four cylinders breathing for the?
Storage.
Storage, oh, okay.
So the idea is instead of, if you were to simply just fill your cylinders off of the air compressor, it would take a pretty extensive amount of time because you have to build up that pressure from zero every time. With the storage, you have it there at a higher volume. So as you take off one of those storage tanks, they'll equalize with your cylinder and then you work through cascading to, you can fill a lot with a little.
So you're, you're filling them in Springfield right now?
We are.
And they're okay with it, they're?
Yep, it's working together.
So do you, do you ever fill them during a fire? I mean, when it, when you've got a big enough fire, that's, you would run back to the, to the firehouse to fill them if you had to?
No, so that same storage system that we have, so we use Walpole. We use Walpole and then our backup would be Ludlow. So on their, each one of those departments on their engines, they have these storage cylinders. And so with those cylinders at a full, you're able to fill, with four cylinders that are full, you're able to fill something like 90 of our size cylinders, based on the volume of the storage. Back in our old utility, we actually used to have that back in the 90s. But with the departments around us that had more storage than we had and with technology and higher PSIs, it was not something we upgraded to continue the use. But it comes directly to the, the incident that we would be at to fill on scene.
Has there ever been any discussion about just sharing the Springfield one? I mean, is there an advantage to having a dedicated one just in Chester?
So pretty much most departments have their own compressor and I would also think of the concept of we have a building fire at 10 o'clock at night and we get back at 2 o'clock in the morning. If you don't fill the cylinders and there's a car fire or anything that is in a, be a IDLH, immediately dangerous to life and health air, and we don't have full air cylinders, then we can't go into that environment to do anything. So the idea of going to a different town to fill that, I think, is working on a temporary basis, but on the concept of having to go out there constantly would, at, at some point, you would have a town that doesn't have filled air cylinders and therefore not able to go into a building fire, not able to go into a carbon monoxide environment, not able to go into hazmat, a car fire, the list would go on.
So you, you wouldn't be able to even fill your storage tanks?
You would not.
Because those are stationary, they don't move, they stay where they are, they're not on a truck or anything.
And we looked into, again, Airgas, Manoxi, do they have a truck that would be able to go out and then fill our storage? And they, they don't. And the other part of that would be the contamination of the airlines as you move from that, connecting those cylinders together and then re, having to get everything tested for, for checks.
Anybody have any other questions or concerns?
It's a big item, we did, I know Chief Wilson approached the, about this being an ARPA fund item. And again, we've looked for grants on it consistently. We looked into AFG for it this year, but they considered it a medium priority. And pretty much is that the millions of dollars that they put out with that grant, if it's not a high priority item, it's not going to, to get any traction. So we didn't include that as any part of our, our request this year.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yes, please.
I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion for $50,000 for the fire compressor.
Second. Peter's the motion and Lee's the second for the purchase of a air compressor for the fire department, not to exceed $50,000. Any further discussion on this?
Do we need to add using ARPA funds to that motion?
Yeah. Yep. The use of ARPA funds for the purchase.
Yep.
Second.
Amended, all set. Any further discussion on the amendment? Amended motion. All those in favor of approving a air compressor for the fire department, using ARPA funds, not to exceed $50,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks for being here, Ben.
I just wanted to ask Ben a question. Have we thought about using helium in those tanks? Because they make them a lot lighter and they make you guys talk funny.
Ben Whalen, Fire Department, and I think the voices on the radios would be very, could make for fun nights, so.
Is this a serious question?
No, okay, thanks.
So how do we, so we've just allocated 50,000, but there's another 138. Do we just revisit this? We talk about it and then you're just reminding us, Julie, that we need to figure it out by the end of the year?
So, right, you have 167,945 available left from ARPA funds.
After the 50.
Well, what are we, what are we gonna spend this year on community health? It's your question, sorry, Stowe.
That's a tough one.
That's a tough one and you're gonna have an offsetting revenue.
In theory.
In theory.
In theory, right.
Correct.
Right.
And but remember that your community health isn't gonna get really full under, into swing like a paramedic level until next year because Mike is in school, will have to go to training for that.
But the ARPA funds can be used next year, right? We have to designate them by the end of this year, they could be used in the next calendar year.
Correct. And the other thing you could use it is to offset the ambulance purchase, so that you're borrowing less. Or borrow the same amount of money and allocate it to the ambulance and then that just frees up money in the capital fund to be used in other ways. I mean, there's, there's some things you could do depending on what you wanna do. You know, you could take the, the ambulance is, you know, 350,000. So taking 168, I mean, you'd.
Knocks it down some.
You'd knock it down.
But it ought, the thing about, the thing about paying the ambulance is that capital expense comes from the ambulance. That would come from that department. And if you paid the ambulance down, the capital expense of the ambulance would be less.
Correct.
So when you, when it went up because of you were doing things for community health, you'd offset some of it by paying down the ambulance.
Can, can you just, I wanna make sure I understand what you said a minute ago about allocating the, the ARPA funds to the ambulance, still borrowing the same amount and then using the, the money from the loan that we don't need to pay for the ambulance for something else? Is that's what you said?
So what you would need to do is leave it in capital. It would stay in capital until you have an authorized expense out of capital.
Because here's where my head is on this, the.
Little bit of a shell game, so I do, I'm not necessarily advocating for that.
Well, no, here's, not just like to have it there, you know, hidden someplace, but the old ambulance needs work.
Correct.
And probably will need work going forward, so maybe that is a good way to, to have some funds in reserve for that.
Yep.
Well, putting it in the capital is like a placeholder for it. It either stays with the ambulance and we, it lowers the cost of it. But if we have to allocate some money or put something else into capital, we could do that knowing that there's that extra amount that we put in there for the ambulance that we don't really have to use it.
Well, it depends what you, what you, we bonded for an amount.
Yeah.
We bonded for 350.
For the whole amount.
But you don't have, we don't, so you did a bond vote for 350, right? So bond applications are due May 20. If I know that the ambulance is only gonna cost 250, I'm only gonna go to the bond bank for 250. Because number one, I'm, I can't spend that $100,000 on anything but ambulance because that's what I'm authorized to do. And why would I borrow an extra $100,000 that the taxpayers would have to pay? That would be crazy.
There was the discussion of the shell game.
Correct. I caution against. There is a way, there is a way to do that, I'm not necessarily advocating because as we all know, it can get us into some trouble if we don't play the game right. While I'm being honest.
So things that we've talked about, things that are capital expenses in the coming year that we've danced around. There's the new ambulance, there's updating the old ambulance, which is an interesting idea to put on the table. There's the solar field somehow contributing towards the purchase of the solar field if that becomes something we can move forward to. Great. Are there other things like that that you guys have been talking about for years, but it's just never quite landed?
When we first got the money, we had a whole list that was offered with suggestions and ideas on where to spend it. Some of them were the whole amount at one shot and a lot of them were smaller, it would, different breakdowns on it. At, at this point, I don't even know where that list is.
I haven't. They were, most of them, like, like Arnie said, were, were large projects that far exceeded $900,000. There were some smaller things which have been accomplished. There are, you know, other things that have been talked about is the way finding signage is gonna be going in soon. That money is slated to come from capital.
But it's in.
To come from the grant fund.
Okay, so it's already, it's already planned for?
It is, you could use ARPA funds for that, that frees up $40,000 in the grant fund.
Right.
You can use it that way, so that it frees up other funds. You know, you could use it to buy your dump truck this year and then you don't borrow and that frees up money in the capital plan. So I mean, there's, there's ways that you can purchase things with it that frees up money in other funds if you want to do that. So I, I, I mean, these are just suggestions, I, it really is just more to be thinking about. I'm certainly not expecting an answer on anything tonight as things develop and, and, you know, ideas may, may come up.
I mean, the funds that were expended to date, this list that's here, were discussions that we had. They were approved and they were part of the process as we went along and the biggest one being the EMS building with the, the cost overruns and stuff that we, because we had such a small contingency percentage on that building. So, I mean, that was.
And was built during COVID.
Yeah.
And did you guys discuss each of the items I see on this list individually or was this a slate? Was a large bunch of these all discussed at one time or did you address each of these as they came up?
In the beginning, there was, there was a group of them that were all discussed at one time. These were definitely discussed, most of them individually as they came up. And it, it seems like we still have a little bit more time, so there might be something that comes up that we might wanna address or try to finance with ARPA money anyways. What's the special appropriations? You're gonna have to go up there, sir.
First item on the list, 34,491, what are the special appropriations?
In 2021, when we vote, at town meeting, when we vote the slate of special, the special. In 2021, when we vote, at town meeting, when we vote the slate of special, the special interest groups.
The voted articles.
The voted articles. There was, for the budget year that year, it was agreed to take those monies and put them to, to the ARPA funds. At that time, that was a specific use that ARPA allowed before they let it become basically.
Before they loosened it up for sure.
Before they loosened it up. That was one of the expenses that we had put that one year to that.
Got it.
Yeah, the biggest one that I see obviously is the 390 for the emergency services building. And that expense has saved the taxpayer a lot of money because we're not having to pay interest on borrowing more money, et cetera. So that was the thing that I was concerned about as we were going through this and it still continue to do that is how do we save the taxpayer money? And buying our own compressor is going to save the taxpayer because we're not having to possibly get into a situation that's untenable where we can't enter a situation or we're paying people to drive to Springfield in the middle of the night. So I, I think all of these things are ones, obviously, that are good to have spent this money on, but also it's, it's cutting the tax rate as a result of spending these funds.
I'm inclined like you to look, to at least explore ways that we offset capital expense and therefore negate interest accruing over a number of years. So places where we're, we've already approved something, we're anticipating it will include interest payments going out for three or five years. If those are things we can offset, that's pretty appealing. Especially if it then frees up that money to be used in another way.
Yeah, so you're saving some money on top of it. Besides spending it.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll look at this as we go along. It's just an update to see where we are and the request for the compressor and the balance remaining.
You could spend it on a capital plan.
Spend it to make a capital plan?
Specific. All right. We're going to move on to the next item, which is class four roads. I don't have that much on class four roads tonight because the Chester Conservation Committee has not met yet this month.
Tomorrow, right?
The way it falls. Today's the first, they usually meet on the first Tuesday of the month.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I add one? This is Derek.
Yeah, go ahead, Derek.
I'm having a really hard time with your audio levels. If people could lean toward the microphones or maybe boost everything, I might be able to hear things.
I'll give it a shot. Does that help, Eric?
That's terrific, thank you.
All right. I was, I was just mentioning that I don't have much new on class four roads because the CCC hasn't met for their monthly meeting yet since we first presented them with some information regarding the class four roads. Their meeting is next Tuesday and that'll be the first meeting since they've got the information regarding all these, the class four roads and the discussions that we've been having. Usually our meeting is right after theirs, but because our first meeting falls on the first, they're not having theirs till, I guess that's the seventh next week or something. So there'll be a little more information after that happens. That being said, when I looked at the class four roads, discussions that we've been having, something came to mind and I was thinking about our dirt roads in general, our class three roads also. I, I think they're a treasure that we have in this town as far as the usage that I've been seeing. As I travel the roads, I see more and more people walking on the roads. I see more and more people with their dogs on the roads. I see bicycles on the roads. I see people parking there at the pinnacle and then walking up on the roads. And I was just curious about what we can do to make sure we protect our class three dirt roads also for, for the use of pedestrians and for bicyclers and everything else. And just maybe have a discussion along the same type of lines that we do for our class four roads, which are a little more easier to deal with because they're unique in what they are. But our class three roads are used a lot by a lot of different folks in a lot of different ways and stuff. And I was looking at the speed limits on them and wondering how come there are, some of them are as high as they are? Maybe signage, maybe some ideas. I, I just wanted to breach the conversation about our class three roads also. Maybe they could be incorporated somehow in our discussions as we talk about trails and roads and, and usage and items along, items that are related to that. But I was throwing it out there and just wondering about what the board would think about something like that. I know it's quick and you have to think.
Well, no, it's, well, the, the sight distances for 30 miles an hour on a lot of those roads is just, it's, it's not there.
Yeah.
You know, that, if you, if you were to use an ASHTO standard and say you need to have X number of feet that you can see 30 miles an hour is, is way too high.
I, I felt a lot about the same thing. Whenever I've been on a, on a, on a dirt road traveling, if you're doing 25, you're cooking along pretty well. Never mind if you took it a little higher than that because a lot of people take the, to figure it's a given 10. But I, I was thinking along the lines of a dirt road speed limit of 25 or something to that effect. And then maybe signage for, there's pedestrians on the road, there's horses on the road, there's, and that they should have the right of way on these roads, especially at those lower speed limits and where they go and, and what's happening with our dirt roads. And I'm not saying it all has to happen and that's what should be, but I wanted to bring up the conversation and just to get people thinking about it so that when we come back to this on a class four road discussion, maybe we could also talk about our class three roads, our dirt roads specifically, more than anything. I mean, when they're paved and they're in different areas like Flamstedt and stuff, I, I don't see many people walking on those roads where they're paved. But that happens also, even like the Western Andover Road. That's a little bigger and it's a little more highly traveled. So maybe that wouldn't be a consideration. But our dirt roads, our class three dirt roads, it's just something that came to mind and I was wondering if there was any appetite to talk about them also.
So I'd like to make a comment. I obviously want to think about this a little bit more, but the, the thought about limiting the speed limit on dirt roads to 25 is untenable to me just because I don't live on a dirt road, but I know a bunch of people that do. And going 25 miles an hour, I don't think that's a reasonable limit to set on those roads. I think, talking to Arianna before about, you know, nuisance animals and it comes down to personal responsibility. And most people that I see who are traveling, either paved or dirt roads, are traveling at a reasonable speed and that's what we expect. So I guess I would be hesitant to set a standard that low, especially when there are people who travel those roads every day, know what to expect, know how to navigate the roads and will act in a responsible and a reasonable manner. I understand where you're coming from. We have horses that we walk them down the roads to get from our pastures up to the house to mow the lawn. And most people, actually, everybody that comes by will slow way down and, and act in a responsible manner for that. And that's the paved part. So I, I understand the, the, the issue related to the class four roads. I think that's worthy of discussion. I'm not ready to jump into the class three at this point, but I think we can have that in the back of our minds as we're discussing the class four roads, just so that we know, is this something that we really want to do? Or can we focus on the class four roads first and then possibly talk about the class three aspect of it?
I guess my thoughts on that, maybe I should bring it up in new business. Because I'm trying to add it to something that we're already discussing. And I, I totally understand.
No, no, I'm good.
Anybody else?
I don't disagree with your sentiment because when you're walking on a, a lot of our dirt roads are winding. And if you're walking on a dirt road and somebody comes around a curve, even at 25 miles an hour and you're there with your grandson's hand, you know, and it can be a little scary. And it's hard to stop, it's hard to steer sometimes if there's loose gravel on the road. So I think there is a bit of a danger factor. That said, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Lee. Most people, I think, are very respectful. But I've had incidents where I had to have a conversation with a driver who, who was a resident on the dirt road and came flying around. You know, he's just one of those, I used to drive fast too, I get it. But it was unsafe. What, a speed limit sign changed that? I, I don't know. I don't know. But maybe signage, maybe just signage, you know? Children and pedestrians using the road or something like that. I don't know, I think it's worth discussing though. Discussing further.
The ASHTO standards, once you see what the sight distance is for 30 miles an hour, then, and what it is for 25, that's what you should look at. I mean, I know, I think it was Arnie Stoddard who said 30 miles an hour anyway. And 30 miles an hour on my hill is pretty adventurous.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it used to be that Vermont statute said if the road was not posted, the speed limit is 50.
Right, yeah.
It's now 35. If it's a dirt road and it's not posted, it's 35.
That's by state statute.
And I think most of our dirt roads are non-posted. I mean, I don't, I remember one or two signs around, but not many. But, and I'm, I'm, we're talking, we're starting to talk about something that isn't on the agenda, but I just was wondering about the appetite for the board if they were.
Well, I'm happy to have the conversation about class four roads and then put it on the agenda for further discussion for class three.
So as far as the class four roads go, I already stated what was going on. And at our next meeting, hopefully I'll have some more information and we'll take it from there. Matt Gorski, did you have your hand up?
I did. I was going to comment on the class three roads, but if that's going to be taken up in another meeting, I'll speak then.
All right, thank you, Matt. Next item on our agenda is a liquor license and entertainment permit for a second-class Mediterranean and an entertainment for PJ's Country Kitchen.
What is, what is PNJ's Country Kitchen? Is that the food?
Country Girl Diner.
Oh, the Country Girl, okay.
They're up to your left.
Oh, you get, oh, there they are. So it's a second-class liquor license for Mediterranean wine and cheese, 295 Main Street. And motion, no motion? Motion, no motion, yeah.
So need a motion because it's not signed.
So I need a motion for Mediterranean wine and cheese for a second-class liquor license.
Move to approve a second-class liquor license for Mediterranean wine and cheese?
All second.
Arianna's the motion and Tim's the second. Any further discussion on it? Pretty straightforward housekeeping. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No. And it's just a signature, which is PJ's Country Kitchen, Country Girl Diner for an entertainment license. And it's Fridays or Saturday nights, June through September. Only July 20th, 8 to 10. What does that mean?
Friday and Saturday nights through September.
It's July 20th, not a Friday or Saturday maybe?
Probably it's a special night.
Okay.
Would be my guess.
So there's that one special offer, yeah?
Oh, you're going, they're asking for 4 to 9, but on July 20th, they're asking for 8 to 10.
All right. And that one's just a signature?
That is just a signature, that's the original.
This is the original?
Flip it over.
Thanks.
Can I make a motion that we get a new battery for that clock up there? Slowing up. It can't be just eight o'clock.
No, it's.
The clock is rough.
It hasn't sprung forward.
Yeah, maybe. Oh, is that all it is?
I think that's, it just has to be set forward, yeah. But it is slow by 10 minutes. I think it's been changed since then.
Lost the handle. Somebody could climb up there and change it.
I can't reach because that's a platform, you gotta shimmy across the platform.
So I think I did that last year.
You did.
Yeah.
New business, future agenda items. Anybody have anything they'd like to see?
I'm looking forward to seeing a purchase and sales agreement.
Don't hold your ground.
Probably won't be the next agenda, the rate we're going. But tomorrow night is the ambulance is hosting. Several of the social service groups will be here.
That's at the emergency services building?
That is here.
It's here?
Here at Town Hall, yeah.
Anybody have anything else?
May I have a moment?
Go for it, Ben.
Ben Whalen? Some of you may know, some of you do not. I have resigned from my position at the Fire Marshal's Office effective June 15th and have accepted a full-time position as the full-time fire chief in Ludlow. I will remain as the acting chief as long as is needed here. And happy to continue working with Julie and the board and the firefighters and the chiefs. And I've been, been with that department since I was 15 years old. So it's a, it's going to be a challenge and a change. But I'm excited for that challenge and I am hopeful to remain a member of the, the Chester department for when I am not in Ludlow. So I just wanted to let you all know that. And I can't say enough about the, the members of that department because they are who make that as, as great as it is. And the, the communication and work with the ambulance service and the, the police department and the, the town hall as a whole, none of those things would be possible without how those folks work together. So I just wanted to let you all know that so it wasn't her to scuttle around town. And I'm sure you'll see more of me, so.
Well, Ben. Thank you, best of luck. Congratulations.
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 But I have to say, I'm disappointed. It really is fantastic. Yeah, it, I'm a little disappointed too as far as, as losing an asset like you are to the community. But good luck in your new job. And I'm glad you're still going to be sticking around to help with fires in Chester. And I'm sure we'll be looking for your expertise in the future as things come up while you're still around. Appreciate it very much.
So Ludlow's going to a full-time chief too?
There are many towns in the state going to a full-time chief.
Full-time? Yes.
Yes. So Ludlow, Ludlow advertised that position two months ago.
Two months ago, January.
I know Peter was retiring.
Chief Colinda is retiring in June, so.
Got it.
Is that Peter, Colinda?
Yes.
No?
We are on new business, future agenda items. All set with that? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 And I'll call our next meeting to order, which is our water sewer commissioners meeting.